We have a pretty light agenda today. We'll probably have a lengthy break between our morning session and our afternoon session, but that'll just be what it is. So to start with, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm just wondering if you could give the public and the board your current estimate of when this morning session might end.
Yeah.
Take a guess.
Well, my hope is about 10:30.
Okay, perfect.
And then we'll reconvene at 3:00. So, Mr. Mokaiewski. Doesn't sound like you're working. No batteries in them. None of them. Well, we'll take a brief little second and get some mics so that we can communicate. That would be good. Yeah, I'm sorry, we weren't ready to go.
So while we wait, I'll tell you all that our grandson does have a name.
Oh, great.
It's Yowali Booz Aniz Gomezmar.
Wow.
Wow.
Very nice.
That is a real smile, that's not a fake smile.
Mr. Chair, I'll just mention something that I learned putting my conversations with our folks in IS who help us with our computers. If you use that access cord as opposed to the Internet when you're trying to find something like the agenda or trying to open an attachment or something, you can get a speed that's probably 10 to 100 times faster than on the Wi-Fi. Living down here, you know, in my sort of country lawyer 1950s computer skill level, and it's really helpful to like get it faster.
Yeah.
But you have to drag this cord around with you, you know, to the meeting.
All right. Are we ready now?
We are ready. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologize, and thank you for your patience. Going to request that we move county administrator announcements to the front. I have a, we have a special guest this morning that I'd like to introduce to the board, and if you're willing to move county administrator announcements to the front, we'd appreciate that.
Okay. Any other adjustments? So with that, I will, we'll have that item next, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Mokaiewski, would you like to take over?
Is there public comment first, or we'll do that last?
We'll do it, just following this presentation.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to invite Florencia Cant to the front here. Florencia, I'll introduce her here in a second. Florencia is a pediatric nurse practitioner at the Charnelton Clinic, and I'm going to share some comments about her in a second. But first, I want to share with you, just to set some context, our, some information about our community health centers. And I had an opportunity on Friday to spend some time with the outstanding team at our community health centers and tour a number of our clinics. And so I met Florencia on Friday, but I'd heard about her before that from an article that Alicia Hayes and Karen Gaffney and Ron Jelm shared with me, and I'll share that with you in a second. But first, I just, you know, want to share that we, last year, our community health centers served over 26,000 patients in Lane County and nearly 102,000 patient care visits during that period of time. Primary care services, preventive dental care services, and mental health services. We have 18, nearly 19 physicians in our clinics, nine nurse practitioners, so about a two-to-one ratio of physicians and nurse practitioners, which is a really nice ratio of providers. One physician assistant and four mental health clinicians. And I think, as the commissioners appreciate, we have a mental health clinician in each of our six community health centers. So we have, we're providing mental health, access to mental health specialist services in all of our, in all of our clinics. Approximately 25% of our staff in the community in our six community health centers are bilingual, which is really outstanding. 56% of our patients last year were children or adolescents. 72% had family incomes at or below 100% of the federal poverty level. 22% were uninsured. 67% were covered by Medicaid insurance. 11% of the individuals that are our patients and that we saw last year identified themselves as homeless. 10% had a language other than English as their primary language. So just want to share some of those statistics with you and introduce you to Ms. Cant, who is, as I mentioned, a pediatric nurse practitioner who works at the Charnelton Clinic at our community health centers of Lane County. Florencia moved to Eugene from Longview, Washington, where she practiced after she received her master, masters of science degree as a pediatric nurse practitioner from Vanderbilt University. Florencia loves working with kids and their parents, and I'll share more about that in a moment. She also loves working with adolescents. She joined the community health centers just this November of 2015 and is already having a positive impact on patient care in our community. She is multilingual. She speaks five languages. So she is one of the 25% of our providers who are not only bilingual but multilingual, five languages. She was originally born in Argentina, and the community health center staff in the short time that Florencia has been with us has found her to be friendly and engaging as a coworker who's passionate about improving the health of children and families in our community. So one of the reasons that I brought Florencia here today was to demonstrate the outstanding services that we're providing in our community health centers and the type of people that we have in our organization that are providing direct care to our community and making our community better each day. And an outstanding article that Florencia wrote for an online publication, and I'll just read a couple snippets from it, and I'll share it with the commissioners and anyone else who's interested, but it's titled "The Straightforward Office Visit With A Teenager Turns Into Something Much More." And she starts out, this is from Florencia, she starts out by saying, "I walk into the exam room on a Friday afternoon to find a 16-year-old female who is coming in to see me for a sports physical. And on paper, everything looks great. Seems like a straightforward visit." She goes on to talk about what was identified in this young person, a series of horizontal superficial cuts along her forearm, and the identification as this young person tells her that she's been cutting herself for the past six months and doesn't know how to stop. So it's a very straightforward visit, clearly turns into something much more complex. And she goes on to talk about how primary care clinicians are usually the first to discover that a teenager has been self-harming. And that first encounter can be very difficult for everyone, but it's also critical for setting the stage for successful treatment. She goes on to talk about how, as primary care providers, we already know that access to care is an issue and access to psychological care is even more limited, that it's critical to maintain open lines of communication, create successful partnerships with our patients and their families. And she concludes by saying, "I did not go into pediatric primary care for the money, and if the extra 10 minutes that I spend with a depressed adolescent makes them feel a little less alone and helps foster the development of a culture that doesn't immediately shun those struggling with mental illness, then I'll consider my job well done." And I think the rest of us certainly can feel the same way, that the job is being well-done by Florencia and her colleagues at our community health centers. So I wanted to bring Florencia here today. I noted when she walked in that she would likely much rather be seeing patients right now than sitting in our board meeting, so we'll let her go, but we wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you to her, introduce our other employees in the community to Florencia, and let you know the great individuals and people that we have doing great work in our community. So we have a little certificate here of appreciation for Florencia that we're going to give her, and just thank you for all the work. And sir, I don't want to put Florencia on the spot because we didn't ask her to say anything, but she is here. If the commissioners have any comments or questions that you have for her, please feel free.
Commissioner Farr.
Only a request, Florencia. If you would, the last quotation regarding shunning behavioral health care, may I ask you to read that statement? And I haven't put it on, I apologize for that, but that's worth hearing a second time.
Let me let you in on a secret. I did not go into pediatric primary care for the money, and if the extra 10 minutes I spend with a depressed adolescent makes them feel a little less alone and helps foster the development of a culture that does not immediately shun those struggling with mental illness, then I'll consider my job well-done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Well, thank you very much for coming today. I'm sorry we're delaying you on caring for children and other people that need your help, but this is just wonderful that you're, you've come to our community, great credentials and great energy and spirit to help people. And I think it was, I had read where half of all visits to primary care, health care providers involve some type of either substance abuse or mental health. And I'm wondering, that's sort of a number that stuck in my head from a few years ago. I'm wondering, at the sort of clinical level, either here or in Longview or wherever else you've worked, what your experience has been as a primary care health professional and the number of visits that have an overlap or maybe, or even dominantly, a mental health or substance abuse. So in this instance, the young woman comes in, she's there for a school physical, I guess you give her a school physical, but the real reason that this is, the outcome is positive is because you're identifying this other big issue. So I'm just curious what your own experience has been.
I tend to attract a lot of those cases, and I'm really happy about it because I love dealing with it, and a lot of people get really scared when something like this comes up. I usually give teenagers, you know, five to 10 minutes of private time with me, so I ask the parent or the guardian to, you know, leave the exam room. And then I ask them if there's anything they want to talk about or share. And stuff like this usually comes up, it's really common, especially, you know, right now it's so easy to learn about other people, you know, self-harming and everything with social media. Like in the past, it used to be, well, if your friend was cutting, then that's how you learn about it. But now it's out there. And, you know, most of the time, it's just, it's a coping skill, a maladaptive coping skill, but it's available. And the same thing, I think, happens with, you know, drugs and alcohol. So I see a great, a great number of patients that are struggling with this. I grew up in a place where counseling and mental health was not a huge deal, like most of my friends weren't in counseling. It's normal if you weren't in counseling, it was because your parents didn't care about you enough to send you. And then here's like this big deal, like you have to go counseling because you're crazy. And it's like, no, it's not really that way. So I'm just trying to normalize mental health and just promote it in general.
And I'm counting Spanish, because you're from Argentina, and English, because you're in Eugene. Can you give us some overview of the other three languages that you speak?
So I speak French, Italian, and Hebrew fluently.
Wow.
And I speak some Chinese and Tagalog.
Wow, okay. We've got a pretty large Philippine community here, and so that might come in handy. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Lichen.
Well, I thank you very much. I really don't have any more to add, but I will say, very impressive, and really appreciate your work. I think Commissioner Sorenson just hit on it. I'm, it's great that you're bilingual or trilingual or quadlingual or quintlingual. I don't, I don't even know how, if that's even a correct phrase or not, but I, I think it's, it's a, it's a very much a plus, and I think it's very beneficial. And, you know, after all, our country was founded on making sure that we're a country of immigrants, and so, including, I think, most of our parents, grandparents, and so on and so forth. So thank you for your work, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Florencia, thank you. You truly have a heart to serve others, and so thankful that you chose Lane County to bring your passion to assist us in serving the citizens. So thank you very much for the great work you do.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mokaiewski, thank you for highlighting this individual today, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So next, on our agenda, we will move to public comment. It's the time where we allow speakers up to three minutes to approach the board and speak about any topic that they choose. Today, we have one individual, Joyce Simon, so far, signed up. If you'd like to come to the podium and state your name and, I guess, where you live, and then I'll turn it over to you.
I guess you can stand up.
Yes, please. We'll put it in his mailbox, so yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
It's kind of to the point of Commissioner Sorenson. This is a Register Guard newspaper from November that highlighted the meth epidemic in our town. It's so improbable in our idyllic area that we have this kind of, we have this kind of concern.
Joyce, if you go ahead and start with your name.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Joyce Simon. I live on Bentley Avenue here in Eugene. I'm here as the treasurer and a director on the board of Just In Time, which is a holistic recovery support service organization. They've been working since 2009 to revitalize the Forest Work Camp and use it as an adult residential treatment and recovery facility specializing in methamphetamine, which is known to require a longer recovery period than any facility in our county has to offer. There's, we're right now at a great confluence of public need and public support and funding by way of the RFP that Lane County just put out specifically to fund new or expanding drugs of abuse disorder. And Just In Time, there's a timeline in that brochure that I gave you, has been working diligently since 2009 to make this happen. The speed bump we're running into is being able to use that camp. And as a citizen and a businessperson, I'm surprised that it's just sitting there languishing and unused when our community has such a need for a program like this. So I implore you to allow the Public Works folks who are now, this is under their auspices apparently now, to work with us and allow us to respond to this RFP with a community-based consortium relief nursery sponsors. Crystal, that's all with us on this. So please support our bid for that Forest Work Camp and for this RFP.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board this morning? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we will move to the response to item three, which is Commissioner's Response to Public Comments and/or Issues and Remonstrance. Any response? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. You know, back in 2015 in March, I talked a little bit about the lack of primary care providers in Lane County, and we have an ongoing agenda item or agenda team request to explore how we can attract more primary care providers to Lane County. Hearing about Florencia Cant this morning is just as encouraging to know that the men and women that we do have providing primary care in our, in our county are doing it at an extremely high level, going beyond the job, going, extending beyond the actual realm of their, of their service provision and identifying problems that otherwise may not be identified, period. It's pretty encouraging to see that happen, but I'd like to mention that we do have that on our ongoing agenda team request, and this is something that we are looking for, is how do we make certain that more people are able to have direct access to the primary care that Ms. Cant, Nurse Cant, was talking about this morning that you described. That was very encouraging. Thank you very much for bringing her here today. You know, last week, I was asked to sit in on an evaluation of our FQHCs at Riverstone, and when I got into the room, the team who were evaluating the FQHC were, they were pretty grim-faced, and the staff at the, at Riverstone were a little bit nervous about it because these folks come in from all over the United States and had spent their first day in evaluation and had provided some early notes regarding what typically they see as concerns. The first thing they said to me when I sat down is that they had, that they had concerns, that the leader of the, the team leader said we had concerns, but as soon as I met the staff, the concerns started to go away. And by the time they left, at the end of the day, we received a, in his words, no dings. So we got a superior evaluation on our federally qualified health centers. And it just is coincidental that Ms. Cant was here this morning. She does work at the Riverstone Health Clinic, and she was listed as a staff member there. And it's, you know, she just is characteristic of the type of care that we in Lane County are providing, that Lane County government is facilitating and providing through the FQHCs. And the estimate is that, I think we're serving someplace in the neighborhood of between 40,000 and 50,000 individuals annually at the FQHC. That's the number that is coming, coming to mind, and we did open a new FQHC last year. And so while we're moving closer and closer to making it so that everyone does have access to primary care, we're, we still have a ways to go, but primary care is essential. And primary care identifies things like self-harm that otherwise may not get identified. So, Mr. Mokaiewski, thank you for bringing Florencia Cant, Cant here today. It was a wonderful presentation, thank you.
Mr. Mokaiewski, or I'd like to speak to Ms. Simon's request. I serve on the Facilities Committee, so I'd like to take this item back to the Facilities Committee and discuss it with Mr. Crainer specifically about the use of the Forest Work Camp. I'd like to refresh my memory. It's my understanding, according to legal counsel, that there's some very prescriptive uses that can be used when that facility was approved under land use law. So I'd like to revisit that and see if I can help respond to Ms. Simon's request for an alternative use for that site, because I'm not sure, I don't want to say that for sure that it's not approved, but I want to refresh myself to see whether or not there was ever a determination whether or not this could be a use for that facility. Okay? Any other comments? All right, thank you. So next, we'll move to emergency business. Is there any emergency business today?
No.
Okay. Item five is the consent calendar. This is the, this is a routine item that's considered by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the item is pulled from the consent calendar. All of these, all the work that we do today and these items are available online at lanecity.org. If you go to the meeting and agenda for the day and click on the view material, you'll be able to see all the items that, all the supporting documentation for these items that we are considering today. So with that, is there a motion of approval? Commissioner Farr.
Chair, I move approval of the February 2nd, 2016 consent calendar.
Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes 4-0 with Commissioner Bosovich excused. So next, we will move to item six, which is the county administration. Mr. Mokaiewski, do you have any announcements?
I have a couple other brief announcements here, Mr. Chair. I'll just follow up on a couple comments that we had, that you had about the community health centers, and there's, I think Commissioner Sorenson asked the, roughly the percentage of patients with mental health issues. And it's a really good question. I asked the same question Friday of Dr. Kincaid, our new medical director, and Dr. Ludke, of course, our public health official. I said, what would you estimate the percentage of patients that we see in our community health centers that have mental health issues? 80%.
80%.
80%. Now, I asked that as I toured around and talked to other providers, physicians and nurse practitioners, I asked the same question, and 80% was around what they, what they felt was, and actually, Dr. Kincaid and Dr. Ludke said that might even be on the low end, because it depends, and it's an average. But 80% of the individuals, is an estimate of the number of folks that we're seeing that have some type of mental health issues, and that again is a reason why it's so critical to have mental health specialists, as we do in each of our community health centers, to provide that access. So when a primary care provider identifies an individual with a significant or severe mental health issue, that they can then refer them directly. And we know the numbers say, if a patient is referred from their primary care provider to a mental health specialist in the clinic, where they walk them down the hall to that mental health specialist, 70% of the patients will get care. If the provider has to send them to a mental health specialist outside the clinic, it's like less, it's less than 15%. I think it's something around 10, 10 to 15% of individuals will get, will actually go get that care. So a huge swing in the quality and access to mental health services just by having these mental health specialists in, in the clinic setting. So it's a, it's a wonderful model that's happening there. Commissioner Farr mentioned the HERSA review. HERSA, of course, is the Health Resources and Services Administration of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. So we had, we have not had a review of our federally qualified health center status since, I believe, 2008. So what is that, seven, eight years?
It's supposed to be every three years.
It's supposed to be every three years is their goal. So they let us know they were going to do this review, and Commissioner Farr participated in that. By all accounts, from our staff, it went very well. The federal officials were impressed by the policies and procedures and work that we do at our clinics. And obviously, that FQHC designation is critical in terms of the reimbursements, the grant funding that we receive. We get about $2.2 million per year of grant funds into our community health centers because we're an FQHC. And then we get a higher reimbursement rate through Medicaid because we're designated as an FQHC. So really critical, and we'll wait to see how that, the results of that review, but the indications are was positive. I also want to share that Traveling County, I had an opportunity last, last Friday to meet with consultants, that Traveling County has engaged for a Phase One study on sports and conventions in the community, and so spent about an hour with them, and it's exciting to look at, we've talked a lot about downtown Eugene, downtown redevelopment between the park blocks and Keesey Square and where's the courthouse going to go, and the butterfly lot, Six and Oak, and the riverfront, and everything that's happening here in Springfield with the Glenwood area, and, and using the 2021 games as a catalyst for positive redevelopment in the community. I think this, this study will be interesting to see what the recommendations from the consorts come forward with on sports and conventions. Commissioner Stewart and I had lunch with the Assessment and Taxation Staff last, was that Friday?
Wednesday.
The Wednesday?
I think so.
Can keep the day straight, but we had a great, great meeting, and we go and tour and do lunches with a different department in Lane County at least once a month, and it's just an opportunity for people to bring a sack lunch, and we provide an overview, and the folks ask questions. Had a really good conversation, talked a lot about the budget process and issues we're facing in the budgets, had some really good ideas and suggestions around different services that are provided out of the general fund and other departments, and how we can capture the revenues for the services that we provide there. And then finally, want to share with commissioners, as you know, as part of the Park Master Plan update process, the Ocean Woods property, which is just outside of Florence, in the urban growth boundary, outside the city of Florence, was a big issue. You received a lot of emails and comments and petitions from residents in Florence. I had an opportunity on, I can't remember which day, one day last week, I was, drove out to Florence and I toured. out to Florence and I toured with Charlie Campeon and a couple of other individuals, toured the property. We met at the library, the Saisel Public Library, to give me a presentation about the history of that property, and I assured them that we're going through a lengthy and thoughtful process that will further engage residents throughout the community in our Park Master Plan update. And I assured them that commissioners are listening to the feedback receiving from a number of constituencies about what is in the best interest of our park and our community in general. So just wanted to share with you that I think it was appreciated that Lane County continues to listen to the residents that are expressing concerns about different issues, and we continue to move forward with our Park Master Plan update. So thank you for the time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay. So let's move to item 6B. It's order 16 dash 02 dash 02 dash 03, in the matter of referring a five-year local option levy to the voters to support 4H and OSU extension programs in Lane County, directing the county clerk to place such question onto the May 17th, 2016 election. We have with us Mr. Kyler, our Intergovernmental Relations Manager. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, commissioners. Before you, we have, you have a board packet that includes your memo as well as the draft order that is required to move the question to the clerk for next steps in this process. And included as well is the explanatory statement that was developed for inclusion in the state voter pamphlet that will come to Lane County voters. So the, to go to the memo, we did have a public hearing, as you recall, on this issue several weeks ago on January 12th. And at that point, there was some conversation that the board had with me as I was presenting about how we would handle election-related costs. So I've tried to put updated information into this memo that addresses that. One of the issues was what is the mix of issues that the, that the county clerk will be faced with, with respect to county measures? And there's two board, there's two vacant seats for the Board of Commissioners, or contested seats for the Board of Commissioners. There's the, these two, what we believe will be two referrals for revenue questions, and then there was a possible code amendment, and I'm just not certain whether that will occur or not, is that we, there's still dead, there's still some time before people have to actually file. So these are a little bit on, one of the issues, or two of the issues are sort of uncertain. Irrespective, the issue was how do we get to the actual costs of that election? And it turned out to be just a, essentially a negotiation with the Extension Service. How much were they comfortable with, given what we felt was in the, in the neighborhood of what the costs we would incur for the election? Ultimately, you'll see in the board order and the memo that we landed on holding back $8,500 to at least mitigate the cost of the election for Lane County. So I want to be clear that that doesn't really need to be a part of an agreement with the Extension Service, because these dollars will come in to the county, and they're, essentially it'll just be a holdback of those, of that new revenue if the measure passes. The other, the other item that is in the memo is there is a, because those dollars will come in and they will need to be budgeted, there will be some contracting arrangements. The financial planning manager tells me that those dollars will be subject to what we call cross-dalation within the county. So there will be an annual carve-out of that revenue of between $500 and $1,000 a year that will then support those activities for the county. We did discuss what the services that would be provided by the Extension Service, and that is in the board order. You can see under the fourth, now therefore, that there's a list of services that the Extension Service would, this would be expected to address within some sort of contractual arrangement, again, if the measure passes. So that gives a little bit of sense of sort of what the, what the voter can expect to receive from the Extension Service in terms of expanded or maintenance of services that would exist in the future with the new revenue. The, moving to the actual ballot measure language, as you recall, there's sort of three components to a ballot title. There's the caption, question, and summary, and those are subject to statutory word counts and word limitations. So you've got that in your packet. They, I don't think there's necessarily anything that really needs to be called out within that, that document. It is, like I said, subject to those word counts, so you've got to, we had to pay particular attention to trying to make sure we cram as much information into, especially in the summary, 175 words as possible. And then your final piece is the explanatory statement, which you also took action on on the 12th to form the explanatory statement writing committee. We had five individuals who participated in that process. I think we explored six different versions of a possible document, or there were at least six different versions that evolved over time to develop this statement. It, under the Oregon, under Lane County Code, it needs to be less than 500 words. This is less than 500 words. You'll see it's fairly, fairly brief. I think it was a good process, and at least the committee members seemed to be satisfied with the way that it evolved. So I think that concludes my remarks, and if you have any questions, obviously. Okay. You have several folks from the Extension Service who are here today, and if you ask something, I can, or I may ask them to.
Okay? Questions, comments? Or at a loss of words? Well, first of all, I want to thank the folks for being here to, for this item. I think there's probably not many questions, because this has been for the board, I think, three or four times now, going through the steps to consider this, and, and I believe we had a public comment on these, on this item, and we're really down to, to approving the items that you've spelled out here, the three mandatory items for placing it on the ballot, and then an explanatory statement. I would say that as a rural commissioner, that this service that the OSU Extension provides is, you know, I'm not going to say it's critical, but it is a very good service for citizens. And when you look at the fact that the funds are helping with defer the cost for the 4H youth program, it also would ensure access to the master gardener, master food preservation, compost pruning specialist, food pantry, and master woodland volunteer programs. It also would assist in rural suburban and urban residents with pest disease and weed management, soil and water conservation, provide food safety and preservation, nutrition, and wellness education, and provide technical assistance for farmers, forest owners and nursery growers emphasizing management of insect disease and, and production problems. And, you know, for most of us that are just hobbyists, or we have a small tract of land that we, we do this, this information is critical. I mean, if you walk outside and you notice there's something going on with your plants and you don't know who to turn to, or if your wife's trying to preserve products from the garden and making sure that they're done in a manner that's not going to be detrimental to our health, these are, this is a very valuable service, let's say, for our citizens. And so I'm supportive of forwarding this to the, to the voters to, in hopes that they'll agree that this is a service that we need to enhance and restore in Lane County. So, Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. And, you know, during my years as the Executive Director of Food for Lane County, I came to have a new appreciation for the Extension Service, the many different things you do. You helped us with the recipes for unusual products that we had an abundance of, and an appreciation for your service even beyond the one that I grew up with in Tillamook County, where Tillamook County, I think, revolves around the OSU Extension Service. So I think, you know, this, to me, this is a, just an extension of the work that you do. Commissioner Stewart mentioned food preservation at the Food for Lane County. You not only help with food preservation, food preparation, and the use of unusual foods, but our gardens, you know, the grassroots garden, and the, and also the Springfield Youth Farm, the immense help that you provided at the, I'll say it again, the grassroots level, helping people to learn how to better grow the food that we distribute at Food for Lane County, and teaching the kids, teaching the kids who otherwise may not have anything to do that weekend, how to actually farm on a real farm. You know, it's, it goes beyond words, and most people don't even understand and appreciate the work and the depth of the work that you all do, not only in Lane County, in Tillamook County, but virtually every county in Oregon. So thank you very much. And I have a motion, Mr. Chair, if we're ready.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move passage of order 16 dash 01 dash 0, excuse me, that's the news bit one, never mind, order 16 dash 02 dash 02 dash 03, in the matter of referring a five-year local option levy to voters to support 4H and OSU extension programs in Lane County.
Wait a second. Second. All right. Mr. Storson?
Well, I am so happy that we're having this day. I know that there's a few of you out there in the audience, but there's many hundreds of people that have worked on this, that have been in this room many times and have been doing a lot of work behind the scenes. I'm so happy that we're getting to the point where we can put this out to voters, and that those people that are in favor of this measure will now know that on May 17, the votes will be counted. Roughly two weeks back from that, the votes will be sent out by our county election staff, and that information about the measure is going out. I think it's, it's very helpful for the public to know all this. And, and I think we are protecting the rights of people that want to vote no, because they will have the right to vote no. This is not a decision by the Board of Commissioners. It'll be a decision by the people of Lane County. And, and I, for one, you know, am, am strongly in favor of this measure, and I'll be voting for it, I'll be working for it. And I feel that it's important that we make the connection between this very valuable service that's been suspended for a number of years while we've been in this great recession, and we have not had the sufficient funding to help with this. But this is an opportunity for us as a community to really connect some of the things that we've been talking about at a policy level, food, better food, nutrition, health, getting people into more beneficial activities, recreational activities. And to me, this is really a great, you know, program. And, and I'm sorry that we've not had this program in the way we, we really need it. So I just want to thank everybody involved in, in bringing this, especially want to thank the staff that's been working through all of our millions of questions. You'd think it would be a yes, no. You want to put it on the ballot, yes or no? But no, it's, it's hundreds of hours of work to get it to the point to ask the voters. So thank you very much.
Mr. Farr?
Thank you. I'd like to encourage anyone who may be watching at home to take a look at the, at the board order that I just made the motion regarding, the six where "as" is, and, and understand that a lot of thought went into this, a lot of work went into this, beginning, not beginning with the general public here, where a lot of your fellows were here, probably in excess of 40 or 50 people were actually sitting in the audience. And, you know, providing nutritional food, locally grown nutritional food to, to men, women, and children at home and in schools is just so essential to the future of Lane County. And, you know, I'd like to ask you to just turn around and look out of that window for a second and share a vision that I have. Someday, I'd love to look out of that window and see a year-round farmer's market operating downtown Eugene. We're moving toward it. It's going to happen. It's going to happen. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lyken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've said quite a bit of my piece early on, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of recovering from the flu bug here, so, but I've, I've said a lot of my piece when we first had the public hearing, and I really appreciate the effort involved by all. As many of you know, I grew up with 4H, and it was such an important organization for me personally, not only just having fun, but even more in that teaching of just accountability and discipline. When you're 12, 13 years old and you have to care for something and you're shown in a fair, it's pretty important. And so, anyway, so I'm, I'm very supportive of this, and I think it's, it's going to be fantastic, and I look for Eugene to have a, a all-around farmer's market like Springfield does. I think that would be just outstanding, and so I agree, Commissioner Farr, that would be great.
And while it may not be exactly right outside that window.
Yeah.
Someplace close by.
Anyway, we're just having fun with that one, though. But anyway, so I'll, I'll be supporter of this as well.
Any further comments? Okay, we have motion, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes 4-0 with Commissioner Bozovich excused. Thank you, Mr. Kyler, and thank you for joining us today. Next is item seven. It's county council. Council's not here. We do have an executive session at 3:00. We have two items this afternoon, and we'll deal with them at 3:00.
Mr. Chair, on the, on the matter of Lane County Council, could we have that later today, maybe before or after the executive session?
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll open up in regular session, and, and we'll, we'll either have it before or after the executive session.
Okay, very good, because I do have an item I wanted to bring up.
Okay. Okay. Next is item eight. It's commissioners' business. First is announcements. Do we have announcements this morning? Commissioner Lyken?
Mr. Chair, real quickly, on Friday, I was able to represent the new chair of the Area Commissioner of Transportation on Friday at the Super Act Meeting, Region Two, and I would say we came away with tremendous success. We, we offered up six projects. We horse-traded quite a bit. Unfortunately, one of them did not make it through. That was a Springfield project called Mo Mountain. We're talking to the Springfield leadership. They actually said that the two that are moving forward, that they would like to move forward. The Mo Mountain was the one that could potentially be moved to a, to a different year. So this is through the step process. So this, this reached the 150% scoping. Next, next phase will be down to the, what we call the 100% in the actual financing of the projects. We're actually feeling very confident about this, and this, and, and I think what we were told, we're kind of estimate, estimating of what potentially the money coming from the FAST Act would, would contribute, but at, at that time, they didn't have the specific amount, so we had to kind of back off. So on what we could move, move forward, there is a potential, and, you know, hopefully we can have some dialogue with a couple of the commissioners, on the Oregon Transportation Commissioners. There's still a hopeful that Mo Mountain will be included once the OTC meets later, later this year, and once we know how much money is available through the FAST Act. But I would call it a very successful, uh, super, or, super, yeah, Super, what is it? Super Act, anyway, for Region Two, I would call that, call it successful. On top of that, so we have two projects as well that are called a leverage funding. One of them is territorial highway, and we clearly heard, this is Sonny Chickering, who is the Region Two manager, who used to obviously work here at Lane County. This is one of his top priorities, so we're feeling good about that. And also, there's a major project down in Cottage Grove, it's a $3 million project that moved to the leverage, and also has made it through the initial. And so, walking away from that meeting, I, I was really, really pleased by what, what is the potential coming back to Lane County in, in transportation dollars here in the, in the near future. So all in all, I would say it was a really good day. And thanks to Franny Brindle from ODOT, who was our area manager here. She was at the table with me. We, staff was there, available, and from, from different, from different areas, Rick Ingham made it up, from Veneta. So I, I, you know, I wasn't at the table alone. It was easy just to call staff over and say, what about this? What about this? Because we were really horse-trading a lot from Mo Mountain, but at the end of the day, we just couldn't quite get it in there. And, but five out of six, I would call that a, a really, really good day at, at the Super Act. Thank you.
Thanks. Other announcements? Mr. Farr?
Thank you. And two quick ones. Last Thursday, I met with the editorial staff and the editors of the Register Last Thursday, I met with the editorial staff and the editors of the Register-Guard regarding a project that we have in Northwest Eugene. It's the Bethel Alliance to Build a Better Bethel. It's broadly attended, as far as the membership of the alliance, including ODOT, the University of Oregon, City of Eugene, Lane County, the business community, and nonprofits in the area, the school district. We're all getting together to make Bethel, and the Highway 99 stretch of Bethel, the entire Bethel, which is the gateway to Eugene from the Eugene Airport, to make it a more attractive entrance to Eugene, and build a better area for businesses to operate and for people to live and kids to go to school. We're moving along the path very rapidly. It's not a quick job that we're doing. It's going to be, it's going to take some time. But I met last week with the staff, as I mentioned, and with me was Clayton Walker, Sarah Madari from the City of Eugene, Councilor Greg Evans, the Ward 6 Councilor, my former district, and Larry Newby. And we talked about getting a little bit more public recognition of the project that's moving forward, and building, calling attention to it so that people can see the project as it progresses. Once again, it's not going to be a slow, a quick process. It's going to be slow. It's going to take some time. And building a Northwest Eugene that we can all be proud of, Northwest Eugene, once again, being the gateway, the Highway 99 gateway, plus the airport gateway to Eugene, and the Eugene-Springfield-Lane County metropolitan area. The second thing I'd mention is that last Tuesday, I talked about Operation 365 housing homeless veterans being successful. Didn't have the exact numbers last Tuesday. We did announce the exact numbers last week, and we had planned to house 365 homeless veterans and their families. And we actually, the numbers came in at 404 homeless veterans and their families, either newly housed or remaining in houses that they were at risk of losing. So 404. I'd like to call out St. Vincent de Fall for the yeoman's work that they did in providing the lion's share of the housing and the housing initiatives. So it was successful. It was a team effort, and it's not going to be the last time I talk about it, but it's the first time at this venue that I've had a chance to say 404 veterans and their families were housed or kept in houses last year due to Operation 365, due to the efforts of Lane County, the Poverty and Normalnessness Board, the Veterans Subcommittee, and the partners that we enlisted. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Well, I would just like to say, great work, Commissioner Farr, on the Project 365, and I know Eugene and Springfield played a key role also. So definitely thank you for your leadership and the partners in that.
My part was about this big. I mean, the project was this big.
Well, leadership is important to get things successfully accomplished. And then Commissioner Lykan, I'd like to thank you for the great work on the act process. I can remember years ago being a part of that, and until you experience the horse-trading, or I should say, the presentation of your projects and being an advocate for those projects, and you're dealing with projects around the state, and to come out with five out of six projects moving forward, I know how hard of work that is, and how well-prepared you have to be to make the case. And I just appreciate you leading that effort. So thank you. All right. Next, we have a Geneteam request or work session request. Fellow members have any? Okay. Item 9 is a review of assignments.
Mr. Chair, the one that I heard right after public comment was to work with, I'll work with Commissioner Stewart and Brian Crainer, our Capital Projects Manager, to revisit the alternative use of the Forest Work Camp, obviously looking at land use issues and other potential constraints and what can be done there.
Thank you. Anything that we missed? All right. We do not have an executive session this morning that, as I stated earlier, will be at 3:00 p.m. this afternoon. Is there any other business? Okay. So with that, we will recess now until 3:00 p.m., and we will reconvene in the Board of Commissioners Conference Room upstairs.